Good morning. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts is now called to order at 9:02 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on February 23rd of 2021, with the second notice provided on March 1st of 2021. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on the appointments of Ms. Donna Klopenberg and Mr. Francisco B. Rabon to serve as members of the Board of Directors to the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. Now, before we proceed with hearing testimonies, I'd like to provide the panel of participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing. All participants must abide by rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including the chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name, title, and organization for record purposes. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. For group settings where more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comment. From among the panel of senators, each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room by the host. I would like to welcome my colleagues who are joining us today and also first express the regrets of my vice chair, Speaker Tina Muna-Barnes, who was unable to make it this morning, but she did want to say she supports the nominees this morning. She's just unable to make it as she has a prior engagement she is in this morning. So with that, I'd like to welcome Senators Tony Ada, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Jim Moylan, Senator Telo Taitegui, and Senator Mary Torres. And now we'll proceed with the hearing of the appointment of Mrs. Donna Klopenberg. As soon as that hearing ends, I do know, I'd like to state for the record that the official notice that went out said that we would hold Mr. Rabon's hearing, I believe, at 11:00. However, if Mrs. Klopenberg's hearing ends sooner, we'll just take a short recess to allow AV to reset and be prepared, and then we can go directly into Mr. Rabon's hearing, if that is okay with everyone. And I've spoken to Mr., my office has contacted Mr. Rabon, and he said he is fine with that. So we'll begin with the hearing on the appointment of Mrs. Donna Klopenberg. And I will start first by recognizing CAHA's Executive Director Gillette Leon Guerrero. Please, you may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. My name is Gillette Leon Guerrero, Executive Director of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. And I'd just like to note for the record that while my testimony today is short, it is no indication of my level of support for the candidate. I'm here today to testify in favor of the reappointment of Donna Klopenberg to the Board of CAHA. I have known Donna for many years in various capacities. I think we first met during our high school days, which was a long time ago. But since then, I've known her in various capacities as a board member of various nonprofit organizations, a community volunteer, and a professional. She is knowledgeable, articulate, and dedicated. And she is an excellent board member, always keeping the mission of the agency at the forefront of what she does. She has served on the Board of CAHA numerous times and brings institutional knowledge to the table. She's always willing to take on additional duties and is able to temper getting the job done with a little bit of humor. So I wholeheartedly and without reservations support Donna Klopenberg's appointment to the CAHA Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that testimony this morning. I would like to note that several other people have submitted testimony in favor of Mrs. Klopenberg's appointment here. But I believe the only person present right now this morning is Gillette. So we'll now go straight into allowing the appointee herself the opportunity to speak.
Good morning, Senator Rigel, Chairperson, and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, and the Arts. And good morning, Senators Ada, Brown, Taitegui, Torres, and Moylan. It's good to see you. My name is Donna Klopenberg. I am the Executive Vice President of Klopenberg Enterprises, and I have been a resident of Guam for over 40 years. For the past 30 years, I have been active in many different organizations: the Guam Women's Club, Guam Council of Women's Clubs, International Women's Club, Seroptimist, and Guam Symphony Society. I've also served on the boards of the American Cancer Society, American Red Cross, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and the Guam Economic Development and Commerce Authority. I was employed by the Salvation Army Guam for 11 years as its Director of PR and Development. I have served on the Board of the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities Agency several times during the past 20 years, participating in numerous committees, among which include Recognition of the Guam Masters, CAHA Grants Panel Reviews, and the Strategic Planning Committee, as well as discussion on rules and regulations for the Present for the Arts program. In 2020, the CAHA Board and staff reviewed and awarded additional grants from the CARES Act funding the agency received, all of which was done online for the very first time. Currently, I have taken on the role of Chair of the Art Bank Committee, and the staff is in the process of doing an inventory of all of the art pieces listed in the CAHA Art Bank, identifying those that need refurbishing and redoing, rules and regulations for loaning of the artwork. This artwork is to be shown in government buildings and areas where the most people can observe and enjoy them. I've always believed that the community should support all forms of music, arts, and culture, and that these should be made available for all, whether it is through participation as an artist, a practitioner or performer, or by the ability to enjoy watching and experiencing arts and cultural events. I am deeply honored to have been asked to serve on the Board of the Guam Council Arts and Humanities Agencies, and I thank Governor Lillian Guerrero for appointing me to serve. I welcome any questions you may have.
Good morning. We had some technical difficulties, and I was disconnected. But just for the record, this virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts will now resume its hearing on the appointments of Ms. Donna Klopenberg and Mr. Francisco B. Rabon to serve as members of the Board of Directors to the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. Now, before I was disconnected, appointee Klopenberg was reading her testimony today, and I would like to ask her to just go ahead and if she could begin her testimony again from the beginning. I apologize. But because we had to recess and start over, just please start from the beginning. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Senator Rigel and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, and the Arts, Senators. My name is Donna Klopenberg. I am the Executive Vice President of Klopenberg Enterprises, and I have been a resident of Guam for 40 years. For the past 30 years, I have been active in many different organizations: the Guam Council of Women's Clubs, Guam Women's Club, International Women's Club of Guam, Seroptimist International of Guam, and the Guam Symphony Society. I have also served on the boards of the American Cancer Society, American Red Cross, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and the Guam Economic Development and Commerce Authority. I was employed by the Salvation Army Guam Corps for 11 years as its Director of PR and Development. I have served on the Board of the Guam Council on Arts and Humanity Agency several times during the past 20 years, participating on numerous committees, among which include Recognition of the Guam Masters, CAHA Grants Panel Reviews, and the Strategic Planning Committee, as well as discussions on the rules and regulations for the Present for the Arts program. In 2020, the CAHA Board and staff reviewed and awarded additional grants from the CARES Act funding that the agency received, all of which was done online for the first time. Currently, I have taken on the role of Chair of the Art Bank Committee. The staff is in the process of doing an inventory of all art pieces listed in the CAHA Art Bank, identifying those in need of refurbishing and reviewing the rules and regulations for loaning of the artwork. The artwork pieces are to be shown in government buildings and areas where the most people can observe and enjoy them. I've always believed that the community should support all forms of music, arts, and culture, and that these should be made available to all, whether it is through participation as an artist, practitioner, or performer, or by the ability to enjoy watching or experiencing arts and cultural events. I am deeply honored to have been asked to serve on the Board of the Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities Agency, and I thank Governor Lillian Guerrero for appointing me to serve. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. And before we continue, I'd like to ask one of my committee members, Senator Mary Torres, in the absence of my vice chair, should I be kicked off again for any unforeseen reason? Could you fill in until I'm able to be readmitted? Thank you, Senator. And if me or Senator Torres are both kicked off, Senator Ada, you're another committee member if you could fill in, just in case. So hopefully everything... Thank you for bearing with us. Now, I'd like to offer my colleagues the opportunity to ask questions of the members of the panel who testified today, beginning with Senator Mary Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Donna, it's always a pleasure to see you, and thank you very much for your words this morning. You clearly have been an advocate for promoting the arts in many fashions, not only the visual arts, but the music festivals as well and the symphony. But as part of your mission, do you foresee CAHA having a greater role in economic development by fostering art programs and art apprenticeship-type activities that would then expand arts into the community so that we can build our bank of artists that maybe can augment the tourism experience or add to the Guam product? Or do you have any thoughts about CAHA going in that direction in the future?
Thank you. I do sincerely hope that in the future, in our strategic plan, we have set forth some things that we would like to see happen: more art performances, more art... Absolutely, the Art Bank is in serious need of refurbishing and replenishing especially. And we haven't had the opportunity to do too much in the last couple of years because we haven't had an office space. I don't know how long that's been. I think at least two years. We haven't had a place to venue to host exhibits and things like that. So yes, I very much think CAHA will be developing relationships with the Guam Visitors Bureau, schools, and other arts and cultural activities. And I certainly hope the Guam Symphony is included in that. I think all of those areas can be expanded and should be.
Yes, and I'm glad to hear that because one of the observations that I made in many tourism destinations is the development of art. And art that is unique to a destination tends to be a focus where they actually have institutions where they start people off introductory level onto more advanced types of teaching. And I think that Guam certainly, as part of our cultural preservation, needs to start going in that direction as well. So I would be very interested in supporting, if that's part of your strategic plan, supporting that sort of art development on Guam so that we can continue to preserve and build up also the expertise in our community of artists and musicians and the like. So yeah, thank you for that observation. I look forward to seeing you work on that in the future. And obviously, you have my support just by my presence here today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Donna. Nice to see you again.
Good morning. Thank you. Nice to see you.
You know, this is your reappointment to the Board. Do you believe that progress has been made since your first appointment to the Board over the years? And where do you see the arts going in the next four years that you're on your reappointment?
Well, of course, 20 years ago, things were a lot different. You know, we had a place to showcase our art. We were doing that out at Two Lovers Point. We had been in a building. And so all of those things are going to happen. We've been very excited with our Executive Director and where she has led CAHA over the past year, and she has put many things in place. With COVID, of course, a lot of the artists haven't been able to showcase their art. So we're helping them to develop ways to do things online and through other ways to show things. Even the theatrical productions, they're working now. So I really do think that as soon as we get into our new building, which maybe the Executive Director can answer when that exactly is going to be. I think it's going to be within the next month. I think we're going to hit the ground running. We are all very, very anxious to get going again. We know that the artists need this, the community needs this. Art is just a huge part. Art and music are a huge part of our community, and we've missed it, and we're anxious to get started again.
Well, that's great to hear, the progress made over the years. And eventually, where the arts go to is, you know, the sky's the limit. And hopefully, the expansion and moving into your new building will be able to harvest all that and bring the artisans together and ensure that everything is, you know, being able to continue that progression over the years, the next couple of years. You know, thank you for your willingness again to serve the Board. And I thank Governor Leon Guerrero for reappointing you. And I think that continuity of persons, people on the Board, to ensure that the arts move in the direction that is going to be beneficial to all, not just artisans, but also the people of Guam and those who come to visit our island. So you have my full support, and I look to voting for you on our next legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Moylan, I know you've got to get going, so I'd like to allow you the opportunity now to ask any quick...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Klopenberg, congratulations on your reappointment there. I'm glad you're continuing to serve our island in this capacity. And you said you've been here for 40 years, and I calculate that, that's 1981. That's the year I graduated high school. So I'm happy you're still participating. If you're more active, time doesn't slow you down at all. So you're an inspiration there. You also mentioned the Klopenberg Enterprise where you're the executive. Of course, that's a family business. But can you tell us also on how the family, the Klopbergs have, since they come to Guam, how they help serve the island by the services that they provide through their enterprise? Just share with us a little, please.
Sure. And I would like to clarify. I actually arrived on Guam in 1967, Senator. So it's over a 53-year period, but we were back in the States. So I've actually lived, I think, 45, 46 years. And, you know, I'm a graduate of GW. And in 1971, I'm celebrating my 53th reunion this year. And Klopenberg Enterprises, I mean, starting with my father-in-law, who was a tourism pioneer here, who developed Turtle Cove as a place to bring the tourists in early days and see the cultural dances. Although Frank, I'm sure, probably would have something to say about just exactly how accurate they were in terms of Chamorro dance. Oftentimes, I think they're borrowed from the Tahitian dancers and the Hawaiian dancers. And my father-in-law saw the need for showcasing Guam and its people and moving right along into our development of the Jungle River Boat Cruise, which is now known as Valley of the Laddie. And I don't think there's anyone who's seen it who doesn't think that we really support that. We have the weaving, we have dancing, you know, everything that we can possibly do and adding more, including farming. The farming has been tough, but we're still doing it. And so thank you for asking that. It's very important to my family to see that these types of things are carried on. And we're now in our third generation, and I'm sure my son's going to carry it forward.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I got cut off. But I do appreciate there that you're coming on back. I'm looking forward to giving you my full support when your nomination comes to session floor. And just to let you know, this painting behind me is from CAHA as well. It's a beautiful painting, too, and I really...
I'm going to note that. We're looking for some right now.
Okay. I want to keep it as long as possible, but understand. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. And since you mentioned that, and then since Mrs. Klopenberg mentioned that they're looking for some of their paintings, maybe I shouldn't tell you that the painting behind me is from CAHA because I don't want you to take it back. I like it. But if you need it back, I'll return it.
Okay, Gillette, you're writing all this down, correct? Okay. We don't... We just want to locate everything. There's some that we've lost track of. And like I said, when we get...
I did all the proper paperwork.
I'm sure you did, Senator. Thank you for that.
But if you need it back, let me know. I'll give it back. But thanks for allowing me to borrow it. Now, I'd like to allow for Senator Brown the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And certainly, good morning to Ms. Klopenberg. I think we've seen over the years a lot of her community contributions that she's made, and certainly appreciate her interest in wanting to continue her work with CAHA. You know, we often think of arts as something that's very uplifting, either through music, storytelling, and certainly the printed and the painted work of art that we see and the sculptures that we see. I wanted to ask you, how can we expand that out? Because I mean, Guam, not just because of the pandemic, but even if the pandemic wasn't here, we're going through such challenging times, particularly among our young people and sometimes our elderly in our community that, you know, even when they get together at the senior centers, it may be playing bingo or other things. But do you see ways that we can expand art to put a more positive light in our community and encourage people in a positive way to express themselves? Is that something CAHA has done? Or can you look at that in the future to expand to other people that perhaps would never really be exposed to finding maybe some creative side of themselves that they're not aware of?
Well, thank you for asking that. Yes, CAHA has plans. We just finished our strategic plan, and it was actually done. All of us were on Zoom, learning Zoom, and trying to work with our new Executive Director, Gillette. And the strategic plan outlines ways that CAHA is going to move out in the community. We absolutely want to do that. We want to work more with the schools. And we also always try and work with the underserved. And yes, even the seniors, absolutely. And we want to do that. We know we need to do it. And it's been brought home to me, especially when going through some of the grants and some of the young artists. They're really, you know, they were really suffering because they couldn't figure out a way to express themselves and get it out. We had to work with them to, you know, find ways that maybe they could do a short movies or a short, I guess the podcasts is what they do now. So we're working on all of that. We are. I think you're going to start seeing results fairly soon. As soon as we get that gallery open, we will be doing activities. We absolutely have plans to do that, and we want to do it.
Well, thank you for your response to that. I do have to say, many, many years ago, when I was a deputy at GuamipA, we had artwork that was part of the gallery. And there was an artist at the time, Carol Knutson, who did just this beautiful pencil work that almost looked lifelike. If you looked at it from a certain angle, you would think it was a photograph. And I spent most of my teaching salary after investing to buy her work, and it still graces my home and is still just as beautiful as when I bought those pieces 20 years ago. But it does give a very positive inspiration. Of course, there's many different forms of art. But it was my exposure to your rotating gallery that actually led me to find her and have her actually be able to commission, have her... Actually, I was so surprised I could get an artist to just draw something that I wanted, and she did quite a number for me. And it's still to this day. It's a very positive inspiration that I see. So I might give Gillette a call and find out if she has any artwork I can put in my office again here because it really makes a difference to your environment and even your mental thought of mind. And, you know, we see a lot of our people going through some challenges. And I think wherever we can put some positive light out there in a good way, and maybe, like I said, people find maybe some creativeness they didn't know they had, I think that's all good. They get something positive to go through during some challenging times. So thank you very much, Ms. Klopenberg, for your continued contribution to the community. I mean, you remind us, as you know, we had some nominees yesterday for other boards, and we just see some good people that, you know, you're already busy with all your obligations at work and your family. But the fact that you're willing to extend yourself even further to help the bigger Guam family is most appreciated. And thank you very much for stepping up again to the plate to serve our people. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Taitegui, you're recognized.
Seju Smasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. And Hoffidy Donna, GW rules. Just... Iba GW. And by the way, this is mine, so it doesn't belong to CAHA. And take that. But I do have art that has been catalogued in my office, so please feel free to look at that as well. I know, Gillette, you're taking notes, so please check out my site, too, as well. It's nice because a lot of the senators, as well as even at Adalou, CAHA has been very generous on giving us this art. But the new building, I think, is going to be in dire need of some of this great art that we've been able to appreciate. So I'm very open to allowing you to come by my office and take what you need to showcase the new building. Donna, as far as like language, incorporating music and art, where are you as far as like just incorporating the Chamorro language into all this, integrating it?
Well, I believe right now, and this would... Maybe Gillette's going to have to step in here and remind me. Some of the grants that we have given in the past year, I believe, were, they were going to be translated into Chamorro language. And then I'm thinking maybe one was from the University of Guam. Is that correct, Gillette? Yes, we are working on those. When we announce our grants every year, there's certain categories. And they can put in for that, whether it's the university or individuals who want to work on that. And perhaps they're working on the language along with pictures, photographs. Sometimes it's for children, sometimes it's for older adults or just anybody who's interested. So yes, we do work on that. We're going to encourage people to apply for the grants. The grant cycles, the regular grant cycle will be coming up, I think, starting in June or July. Every year, we open that up, and we do have people that apply for that. The grants panels have been, they're comprised of the community. So the community comes in and kind of decides how they could best fit in. Or sometimes we have to change them from one discipline to another. But yes, we always encourage everything to do with that, especially the Chamorro language, because we want to make sure that is preserved. Actually, if I had known, Senator, that I was going to be here in 2021 when I got here in 1967, I think I would have taken a greater interest in learning the language. I don't know. Maybe Frank could help me out with that. I don't know. Maybe, maybe Frank could help me out with that, because I certainly feel like I missed out on something. But when I got here, you weren't encouraged to speak the language, the kids I went to school, you know. So I think we have made good strides. And Gillette has some awesome ideas moving forward for things like that. And we do encourage artistic things with the language and books.
Well, it's never too late, Donna, to learn the language, you know, especially in your capacity. Even myself, as a Chamorro myself, I stumble, I know more than I can say, only because I don't want to be teased the way I pronounce it. You know, and even some of my other colleagues, we all are looking forward to being, you know, given the opportunity to learn the language through programs. And oh, if we had Frank Rabon come to the legislature as a great teacher he is and anything he does, I think we'll learn a lot faster. So yeah, you're absolutely right. He would be a good person to go to, Donna, to learn the language. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate you stepping up to the plate. I think being here today was a testament to thanking you. I think it's important that anyone who wants to step up to the plate to serve the people of Guam, that as a legislator, we should be here to also, you know, show our gratitude. So thank you again. Looking forward to seeing more work that you're going to do, the, you know, all the progress that you're making. And my door is always open. So if you have any questions or anything I can assist you, as well as you, Gillette, please feel free, you know, to reach out. And thank you again for the opportunity, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Mrs. Klappenberg, I would like to say that I'm in full support of your nomination and your appointment. And just speaking for me personally, I am aware of a lot of the good things that you and your family have done to support the culture on Guam. I'm a member of the board, I've been for a while, of a cultural dance group on Guam called Inetun Gef Pogu. And several years ago, I actually reached out to Donna and Mrs. Klappenberg and asked, hey, we need some help with a big event we're going to be putting on with busing. And you connected me with Brad, and you guys really supported us. And you've supported us ever since. So I can speak with firsthand experience that you've been very, you and your family have been very supportive of the culture on Guam. And I'm very appreciative of that, of being supportive of the Chamorro culture and groups that are looking to perpetuate and promote the Chamorro culture. So thank you for that. And I think you're greatly suited in this capacity to be on the Kaha board. And so you do have my full support. I just want to ask you one question, and it's kind of a loaded question, so I don't know if there's much you can do to answer, but whatever you can do to answer it. I'm just kind of curious if there's anything, what's one major thing you could say that, again, it's a very kind of long question to answer, really, but anything that comes to your mind that you think is one really important thing that the island of Guam needs to do to improve support for culture and the arts?
One thing? Well, there's probably a few that I could think of. I do know this, and I was asked this before. I really think that Kaha needs its very own permanent space to do what we want to do. And it's probably going to take a few years and some planning and money, of course. But this would be in addition to our wonderful museum, which has certainly added a lot. But I do, I do want to see, hopefully, I'm going to see Kaha with its permanent space, permanent gallery, a place to do programming, and to help the artists, to help the artists. And right now, of course, they're really struggling. So we want to do all we can do to, you know, make things better for them and to bring more people in, to, like Senator Brown said, get people working in the art and culture of Guam. So build us a building. You asked, Senator.
I asked for it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I agree, you guys probably do need a permanent place.
Thank you.
Right. This concludes the hearing for Mrs. Klappenberg's appointment. We will take a short recess for five minutes before we proceed with the confirmation hearing for Mr. Francisco B. Rabon. So please give us five minutes. Hoffa de and good morning. This virtual public hearing will now reconvene for the appointment of Mr. Francisco B. Rabon, who was appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the Guam Council and the Arts and Humanities Agency. I'd like to welcome again my colleagues who are in attendance at this hearing today, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Titegui, excuse me, I missed you there, Senator Mary Torres, forgive me, I thought you may have logged off. And with that, let's go ahead and begin with Kaha's executive director, Gillette Leon-Guero, if you have testimony this morning.
Good morning, and thank you, senators, for the opportunity to testify. My name is Gillette Leon-Guero, Director of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. And I'd like to note, as I did earlier, that while my testimony today is short, it is no indication of my level of support for the candidate. I'm here to testify in favor of the reappointment of Frank Rabon to the Board of Kaha. I've known Frank for many years. I first met Frank in the 1980s, when we worked together on the first locally-produced video, Guam Paradise Island. He choreographed the ancient dance scenes and was intensely involved in bringing culture and the performing arts, not only to the island, but abroad as well. He has never let up since I've known him. I know him to be passionate about history, art, and culture of Guam. My experience with him as a board member has been a sheer pleasure. He doesn't speak often, but when he does, you know it is something of substance. He is a strong advocate for the artists and the agency. He is concerned with ethics and fairness, and will speak up if he thinks that there's been a violation. He has been at the forefront of the arts nonprofit sector, and his knowledge in this area, combined with his artistic talent, make him an ideal member for the board. He brings a lot of value to the Board of Directors. So I wholeheartedly and without reservations, support Frank's appointment, reappointment to the Kaha Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leon-Guero. I see that Mrs. Klappenberg is still here. Did you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I'm just here to support Frank. I don't think there's anything I could add that could possibly say anymore, except I really have enjoyed being on the board with him and looking forward to continuing that. And he's very much needed and loved on our board.
Great, thank you. All right. And with that, we will go to the appointee now, Mr. Francisco Rabon.
Hoffa de todo samdu. Aanin minagoo para augum mutsumas senedot rachel ni gumiluluhi kumutean manatsaut siya da ni pumalu siya na senedot dan senedoras ni manmatatsu du pogu na aani. Waho si Frank Rabon. Be tulakasti ifino o da be sangan ifino englis ko sanu todo si ne kumampendiapa usasengan. I am Frank Rabon. I've been first appointed to Kaha in 2016. This was the first time that I ever became a member of the Kaha Board. And since then, I've been involved with a lot of the changes that occurred there, such as the strategic planning, and also the support for more inclusivity with the practitioners, both contemporary as well as indigenous. I've been a passionate individual for 38 years in the reestablishment of the Chamorro dance, the Bailem Chamorro, so that once and for all, we would stop being mistaken for Tahitians and Hawaiians. And I can basically put forth the true essence of our 4,000 history that truly represents our people, good or bad. I've been, I'm born and raised on the island. I've lived most of my life here on the island, and I really appreciate the reappointment to the Kaha Board. I truly believe what Kaha stands for in their endeavors to preserve, perpetuate, educate the community with the arts and culture, as well as their endeavors in trying to move forward in putting together more exclusivity with everybody that is part of our community. Am I supposed to open up for questions, or am I supposed to continue speaking on behalf of what I feel is necessary? I think I've covered most of what I feel is necessary, sitting as a board member for the Culture of the Arts and Humanities.
Yeah, I think our chairman has frozen again.
Yes. He's frozen.
Take over again.
Yep.
Okay. Sidoos maasi, Mr. Rabon, sen agredesitore bidamu pare ikmulidat. Yon fanagi ifamagonta ni bailem chamorro. So todo, todo ha bidamu pare ihe zeni kaha, i bordi kaha. I just want to also ask you to, you know, you clearly are very committed to the, you're very committed to Guam and very committed to dance. And I just want to ask you, you will continue to serve on Kaha as long as we will allow you. Is that correct?
As long as I'm still alive.
That's very good, because I think your contribution is clearly, clearly immeasurable. I mean, just in what we've seen you do, in what we've seen you do when you take Guam to the travel shows off-island, you know, it's very hard to put a handle on genuine love of island and wanting to spread that love and educate others. And that's something that, you know, I've seen in you. So sidoos maasi senor para todo bidamu. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to anybody that would like to ask any questions. We'll start with you, Senator Tony.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Welcome back to our chairman, Senator Radeau, for joining us again.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Torres, for covering me while I got kicked out again. I'm not sure what's going on.
No problem.
But Frank, you know, thank you again for stepping up to the board. You know, our families go back many, many years. I have many family members who have danced. You have taught them the dance of our culture. And, you know, that truly means a lot, especially as they've grown into adults. You know, they still continue that passion for our cultural dance. And it's because of you that they learned it, and they embraced it, and they continue now. And they have their own children, who I hope that they continue to pass that legacy down to. But, you know, your inspiration and your leadership in taking our culture to the next step, right? And you're right, when you said in the beginning, we don't want to confuse or mix our cultural dance with Tahitian or Hawaiian, and actually making it what we have, good or bad, like you said. And, you know, all of that that you have done for our island and our people, and I continue to look forward to every time you're out there doing a dance or doing a show, it's very enjoyable. And I hope that you will also continue on the board for as long as you can. But you have my full support, you have my vote, and I'm looking forward to the chairman putting your nomination up for vote in our next session. Thank you, Mr. Rabon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and certainly thank you very much, Mr. Rabon. Certainly, over the years, we've seen your major contribution to promoting our culture. I just wanted to ask you, as you continue on your creative journey and certainly on your work with Kaha, where would you like to see things go? Is there another level you'd like to take, the work that you're doing, or other things in our arts here in our community?
I especially like to see the language more intensify. The language is the umbilical cord to our indigenous heritage. And yet, I feel the loss with the generations, the upcoming generations that are growing up. A lot of it has to do with technology, a lot of it has to do with Western ideals. But I think that there's enough incentive out there to help our young generation. There's no excuse anymore. Like Donna Klappenberg said earlier, in the 50s and the 60s, we were prohibited from speaking the language. I was part of that, growing up in that era. But now, this time, there is no prohibition in the speaking of the language. And there's no excuse in learning the language. So I see Kaha in the grants that we have approved for the past years that I've been there, being inclusive more in the language. And that's the level I want to see. I want to see more of the language, the fluency in the speaking usage of the Chamorro language with the young generation.
Do you see that maybe that disconnect that we have now, because at least of our time, we were able to grow up with the influence of our parents and our grandparents, in what we looked at as a more traditional influence in our families that we don't, that, you know, like you mentioned, our young people don't have now? Do you think the language and getting more of our young people to have a better appreciation and comprehension of the language will actually can restore some of those values of respect and care of our land and things that probably we're seeing disappearing, you know, in this more very self-centered community that we have now? You know, there's not as many people have that same sense of community involvement or obligation or responsibility, shall we say, than when we were growing up? I mean, if we got in trouble, our parents heard about it long before cell phones were ever developed, before we even walked through the door. You know, that sense of ownership of our families and our children, even if it wasn't your child, you know, you made sure that they were taken care of, or making sure that they're on the right path. Do you think our language will help perpetuate that for the newer, younger generation that perhaps does not have that influence in their home environments that many of us still have, the remnants of being able to grow up with here in Guam?
Definitely. The language, it gives you the incentive to connect to who you really are, where you came from, your history, and where you're heading forward. Without that center within yourself, without the speaking usage of the language, you become disconnected. So the language, the reinforcement of our indigenous language, especially to the young generation, will just make them more connected to who they are and will intensify.
Yes, I'll be there at noon.
It'll intensify their pride in the preservation, the perpetuation, the education and promotion of our language and culture.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rabon. I appreciate your input. And certainly, it's just something, certainly having known your family, you know, your sister is very dear to me, and the influence she has, and very fluent in speaking and writing, even the language, she's been very helpful to me. And that's, I know, part of your collective upbringing. But thank you very much for your continued service. I mean, seeing you do what you do gives us all hope for the future. So thank you for your continued contribution to our people. And thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be able to ask questions and speak with Mr. Rabon. Thank you.
Ben pabetsu, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Sidoos maasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Wen is an hoffa de ko? It's so good. Oh, I gotta move it. You know, we go back. I felt like I was supposed to be, you know, sitting on the other side to testify in favor of your nomination here. I feel like I should be there, because we've known each other for many years. And from your very beginning, in fact, I was one of the first Ta'ototono dancers, yep, that started off in your dance group many, many years ago. And I'm very grateful for that opportunity, because it gave me an opportunity to really get to know my friend Frank. I mean, we've known each other when I was in the music business and entertaining, but...
But I really had the opportunity to deep down know the moral and ethics of this individual. And he has no problem just telling it straight out, which that's the kind of, yep, no problem, just like me. Tell it like it is, don't mumble and jumble and make it politically sound, you know, fun, where at the end of the day, you don't even know what that person says. Now, when Frank says something, and it's just like Gillette. He doesn't say very much, but when he does, it's definitely well-thought-out and credible. I can't tell you how grateful I am that you are staying on this board, this particular board. My colleagues asked some great questions, and yes, the language is dear to me, you know. And I'm so glad that you're emphasizing your position on the board to, you know, to move that forward, and not only to the younger generation, but I think generations like myself that teach the parents, you know, how to speak, the parents, so that they can, you know, help their children. Because it doesn't help when we send our children to school to learn Chamorro, and then they come home and the parents don't know how to speak it, you know. So I think, hopefully, Kaha will veer in that direction or get all the parents to learn Chamorro songs, because I think that's a great way. And of course, Kaha with music, dance, and art. You're finding more of this generation coming out with songs in Chamorro. You know, you go on YouTube and you're seeing this boy who's 16 years old just singing in Chamorro. It's awesome. I mean, I think that's the route to go, you know, continuing Kaha to support the arts when it comes to the island festival or island music festival, because then it encourages them to create music with the Chamorro language in there, too, and invite their parents so they can. So I felt that I just can't tell you how grateful I am again and so pleased that you want to continue to do this. You are a, gosh, a beacon of hope of our culture. And I just pray that you continue on with what you're doing. And again, Frank, my office has always been open. I'm probably texting you, good luck, but you don't need it. You know, please call on me if there's anything I can do to help at all. It's the thing, okay.
Thank you, Senator Tidigui. All right, sorry. My internet connection's been a little bit iffy here, so I think it's working. So I think it's, I think it's working good now. So, Mr. Rabon, I'd like to state, this is my colleagues have for the record, that you have my full support. I think that everything you've done, most people are very well aware of all you've done for the culture and the arts. People forget that dance is a form of art. And specifically, you've connected the two, the culture of Guam and connecting it to an art form that, and we talked about this when I met you for your book signing last week, Friday. Congratulations on the book. We talked about how the art form of dance, of Chamorro dance, was lost. It was a lost art form that had to be rebuilt, essentially, and reconnected back to the people, back to the land. And I think that's precisely what you have done, you with your organization. So congratulations to you and everyone in your organization for all you've done to reconnect that to the culture, reconnect that lost art to the culture. So I think you're perfectly suited, of course, to continue your appointment on the board. And I thank you for accepting the nomination and stepping up to continue the good work that you're doing. And I encourage you to continue all the great work that you're doing. And I see how you're really big, when I met you for your book release on Friday, how you were really big on passing it along to the younger generation. In fact, I might say, I was there to present a resolution to Mr. Rabon, and he told me, no, can you give this resolution to this young girl? And she must have been like elementary-school-aged girl who was one of the dancers. I forget her name, forgive me, but she was one of the members of his dance group. And he wanted her to receive it, because he wanted her to really see the importance of continuing the art and the culture and the perpetuation of this art form and the culture. So I think that speaks volumes on how you've not only worked to set up your own group, but you've really worked to set up groups underneath your group, sort of younger people to take over the helm. And that shows a lot of foresight, with you thinking that you're not always going to be here forever, right? As much as we may wish to live forever, we're not going to all live forever. So you saw that, and you said, you know, let me get other groups involved underneath my umbrella organization so they can continue this work when my time is done. And I think that speaks huge volumes about you and what you've done. I think it's great. So I encourage you to continue that, and I thank you for all of your service. And similar question, I have one question similar to what I asked Donna. Maybe I'll rephrase it a little bit. What can we, give us some advice on what we can do to help perpetuate and promote the arts and the culture?
Well, like I said earlier to everybody that was sitting there, we can certainly use the assistance, not just for Kaha, but for the greater community, the emphasis on the language. If we want to economically be unique amongst the other countries that we compete against in terms of the tourism, our uniqueness is who we are, and that is our language and our culture. And so long as we continue to put emphasis on that, it would be, we would be able to say we are just as unique as the Hawaiians and the Tahitians and all the other countries of culture. And that is where I feel that as policymakers, as governing bodies, as administrators of government agencies, we all need to be able to come together as a community for the greater good and emphasize the importance of the indigenous language.
Thank you, Mr. Rabon. With that, I don't have any other questions. I just want to reaffirm again my support for you and all you do and my support for your nomination. If there's nothing else, unless any of my other colleagues have anything else they'd like to add or any questions, if not, raise your hand if you have a question. If not, I'll go ahead and I'll wrap this up. And just, I'd like to know for the record, I'd like to know for the record that some individuals, some other individuals have also provided testimony in support of Mr. Rabon, and that's well, Judy Flores, they provided some written testimony. Also, I failed to mention earlier, for Mrs. Klappenberg's appointment, there was testimony received in support of Mrs. Klappenberg from David Tidinko, Francis Guerrero, Jane Flores, Judy Flores, Monica Guzman, and Stephen Bednarzic. I hope I said his name correctly, but that's as close as I can get to it. So with that, the committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within 10 business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 906 at the DNA Building in Hagatnia. And may also send your statements to us at or you can send it by fax to 475-4768. Thank you for all of your participation. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned. It is 10:06 in the morning. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.